All right, well, it's 6:00 PM. I know that we're waiting on the mayor for that one item, but we might as well do the housekeeping. So a meeting will come to order. Welcome, everybody, to the Rules and Government Relations Committee Meeting of November 16th, 2020, times 6:00 PM. I want to thank anybody who is showing up now, who may have initially thought the meeting was going to be on last Thursday. There was an emergency. There was something that came up, another presentation that we all really wanted to catch, so we ended up postponing, but I'm glad that folks can still make it to this. Counselor Coniff, we have, I recall reviewing the minutes for the last two meetings, right?
Yes, and it escaped. I know one was October 26th.
One.
I don't know what the other one was.
And the other was the 22nd.
Okay.
And I would entertain a motion to-
Move to approve October 22nd on October 26th, minutes.
Second.
Motion a second. All in favor? Counselor Rest?
Aye.
Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mentor approved. Do we know what, are we still expecting the mayor? Bree, you can probably speak totally to that first issue on our agenda, right?
Yeah, and I invited Maggie, too. My chair-
I'll text the mayor, see if she'll come.
Yeah, I know she was planning on coming, so-
I mean, even if you can't make it, I really just, you know, it seems like a sensible enough thing. I just kind of wanted to get a sense of what the internal sort of thought press process was behind this, you know, and how this would be an improvement over the current situation.
Yeah, so the reason that I brought it up is, health agents are typically, from my experience, they're in small towns. So you'll see it in West Hampton, Worlington, Chesterfield, like these tiny towns, and they're basically an agent of the board. And they provide, you know, they do the inspectional services, like the food inspection, septic, and stuff like that, where a director is somebody who's going to be overseeing staff and just kind of doing beyond things like just doing the inspections. Where I think maybe 15 years ago, that might have been the case in East Hampton, but obviously, we've seen that it, we're growing substantially, and it's no longer just like a health agent position. We've increased staff pretty significantly. We have our, the nurse, the animal inspector, the COVID compliance slash health inspector, the admin, and then the East Hampton Health Youth Coalition was recently put under the Health Department within like the last year and a half, I think, or a year. So that's a minimum of two staff. So pretty much, the Health Department has just grown to be a more professional department, where the position is really beyond a health agent at this point. So that's kind of why I brought it up. I don't know if the mayor and Maggie want to speak to it as well.
I'll go. So, you know, obviously, with the pandemic, health departments everywhere have sort of imploded and exploded. But with that being said, I think even without a pandemic, the role of just a single health agent in this city is no, like Bree said, is really not realistic. There are so many, you know, we've grown, our retail stores have grown, our restaurants have grown, amongst other things that I can't even think of off the top of my head. And that just becomes overwhelming for one person to be able to do, handle all the complaints, all the inspections, and everything else in between. So, and of course, you know, I think we all know that with the pandemic, that's just become, you know, 100 times more than what it normally is. So having a director of our department will, first of all, help the board to be on top of everything, because a health agent won't be stretched in so many different places, and a director will have more of a collaboration and relationship for things going on, but also to just help the city in general with all the requirements that we need right now to keep us healthy and safe. And it's not just about medical issues, it's about housing and, you know, retail and restaurants and bars and so on. So I just can't see how one person can continue as East Hampton becomes more successful as we are now.
Mayor, I saw you had your hand.
Yes, thank you. I think I'm unmuted. Yes, yes, okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I certainly appreciate. I was a little late, I had the wrong link. So my, you know, my feeling around this position and why it's needed, certainly, the pandemic has made very obvious just, you know, not even weak, but broken links in municipal government and services that are key. I think that this department was trending towards needing a director, and I think that that need was really started building probably about 18 months ago. It was very evident as we we had Bree come on and increase the hours and the scope of her health agent, and really what opened was Pandora's Box around regulation and follow-ups that weren't in, you know, weren't weren't in existed, you know, not even three years ago. And they're, you know, super, they're they're super important. And also, you know, we, as a city, I feel strongly that the residents deserve a high quality and a level service of health planning, public health planning. You know, we, you know, the difference between a health agent, you know, you're doing different tasks, and you're kind of, it's a checklist, right? The inspection comes in. However, holding the vision of public health and the interconnectedness between public health, as well as healthy youth, healthy community wellness, being able to do different testing and inspections for the different businesses in town, it requires planning, right? I mean, just like the planning department, this, you know, I would say the planning department, you know, maps out our physical growth, and the public health department is mapping out and enriching people's quality of lives, but also saving lives. And that requires somebody with a broader scope, right? You kind of go to the C, you know, who's holding the vision and whatnot. And so that's my, you know, case for adding this health director position to, you know, city government. I think it would be extremely, it is easy to take a look at this request at this time before this body and say, oh, it's the pandemic, and why would we expand a job? Is this a, is a, you know, a power grab or a money grab? And, you know, I would strongly say no. In fact, you know, this creation, this position creation right now isn't, you know, is going to bring a health director position into a lot of direct service anyways. This is, this is about, could we have been better prepared for what we're facing now? Yes. Do we pay anybody in the city? Do we have a position in the city who actually, their job is to be extremely, you know, prescient and forward-thinking and planful and maximize grant dollars? No. You know, have we band-aided that? Yes. But that's very, you know, different. And that's, you know, what, what I'm seeing really, the city not only needs, it deserves, right? You know, I mean, it's not about, it's good enough for East Hampton, it's about, you know, is it good enough for East Hampton? You know, we deserve the best, so let's, let's build that out. You know, and that's, you know, my, my big push for this position now. And I also would say, you know, we, we need the full complement of also department collegiality, you know, and having a, you know, a health director is only going to enrich the other department, you know, directors and chiefs and whatnot, and make us a more seamless, professional, you know, leadership team. You know, and to, you know, it's awkward, you know, when you look down our major departments, and we, you know, it's director of this, director of this, health agent, like, so who's holding that vision? Do I think right now, we are fortunate to have the person we do as a health agent? Yes, I do. I will also say, hopefully not in the near future, that that doesn't change, but that's really removed from the issue of creating the position. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Of course. Counselor Rest, I see your hand.
Bunch of questions, Mayor. Is the health director structurally oversees the department, therefore oversees the health agent, or is that strictly a board, the board's authority? And secondly, how are we budgeting this? Is this something you anticipate funding in the future? And for now, Bree is the health director slash agent. I'm just curious about structure. I do agree that we need the health director, but how do you see budgeting it, and how do you see moving forward? Where is Bree? Is she both positions now? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, the way, the structure would be that the health director reports and works intimately with the board, the local board of health. And then the health director would then oversee all public health employees, including a health agent, you know, food inspectors, you know, administrative support, you know, very similar to what we see at the DPW or at Board of Assessors, that similar structure. As far as funding the position, we're looking at different options, like I'm waiting on the cherry sheets. I think that it may sound, it's not, it just is what it is. I believe we need this position in the pay plan as an option, and we needed it yesterday, and we have to build out our pay plan to have positions to give latitude to the executive branch of our government to respond to that. Funding a health director right now, or how that, the transition, you know, that's a little nebulous or whatnot. I would, I would look, you know, I'd follow the hiring practices that we do for all of our department heads, and I would offer internally and see what that brings, and then transition to an external search as needed. There are some interesting opportunities with funding through CARE and FEMA, maybe through the rest of the fiscal year, but also there are, there are grants in that department that have administrative costs that are appropriately attributed to a health director. So we've got a couple of things to kind of ragtag it together financially, but I will, maybe a preview of my, my budget letter is that, you know, funding a health director, if you'll approve the position, is definitely a priority. We've waited too long.
So just to follow up, would Bree step in as health director once we create the position? Not necessarily funding it differently. She's being paid as health agent, but she would have the authority as the health director until you separate the positions later on? Is that what I'm hearing? Because you're talking about maybe funding it through the budget process-
Yeah.
June, next June?
I would define out the two positions, and then see who internally applies for the health director position. And then we would have to, once that position was filled, whether that ends up being internal or external, we'll have to redesign the department and cover all of our, our tasks. Already, there are some folks, newer hires in the department, who are expanding their capacity and their role, and you might see some of those hours going up as they are mentored and supported by a health director. And then we would look at the health agent. Also, the state seems to be coming back around to giving support to small public health departments like ours to take over some of the ministerial tasks of a health, a health agent, but also to help us fund such positions. So that's, you know.
Okay.
Great. I know that this is not an immediate thing, but when we speak about, you know, getting a director and sort of, you know, setting up for what could be an expanded department, something that comes to mind, Mary LaChapelle, I know that you've, you've heard me rant about this on a number of occasions, but, you know, I know that this, this summer with the, you know, the murder of George Floyd, and a lot of the stuff that went on around there, around policing and whatnot, one of the big sort of policy proposals that got thrown out, or a lot that I feel was like maybe one of the more actionable proposals, was sort of a more expanded role of public health in, in, in things like, so for instance, potentially getting some crisis workers involved, you know, in sort of the public safety complex, you know, when there's situations where maybe that's the skill set that could be, you know, could more appropriately and efficiently deal with a situation, that that's, that's an option that's there.
Yeah.
And it sound, you know, and of course, you know, one of the things that I had thought about when, you know, considering that was like, sort of, you know, is our current health department, you know, in a position where they'd actually be able to expand, you know, into that sort of role if we-
Right now, yeah.
Found the money. And so-
Yep.
We still haven't found the money, you know, nor have we decided that's something we're going to do. But this does seem like the sort of step that could set us up to be better positioned to do that if, you know, money were to be found.
I, I agree. And, and I mean, I know probably Bree and Maggie have a whole bunch of thoughts on this. What would I'll say on my top level is that there is, you know, a couple of things. I mean, you have, you know, for, for me in public health, you're looking at public health policy in the city, you're looking at, you know, the inspections, housing, and, and what I would say, you know, occupancy issue. And then something that's so important, and unfortunately, the pandemic has made this, and even before that, you know, our crisis around addiction and lack of, of community-based treatment is harm reduction, right? So the Community Youth Coalition and, and transitioning that from the schools to the public health in my head was kind of like putting the toe into the water of expanding public health to truly embrace what, what is really the future of public health, which is harm reduction, exactly what you're talking about, and also not limiting that to substance abuse or something physical, you know, that we can see, but also what's going on in the psychology of, you know, grave injustice and racism. And I, and I do, I mean, that's, I also, in, in that vein, public health brings, and a director would help the collaboration and would bring to East Hampton, you know, kind of the third prong to public safety, right? So, you know, or fourth, you know, fourth prong, but faced, we're outward facing to the public, there's fire, there's police, there's public health, right? So the three of those agencies, departments, really need to work together when you're talking about harm reduction, right? So there needs to be seamless communication. And, and I actually, you know, I think the restorative justice program that, that we've just opted into, that the police department has just opted into, you know, they talk about this harm reduction piece in your community, and who holds it and who doesn't. And I, you know, yeah, I think the health director is the person who holds that vision and builds it out. And, and it's, you know, it's really a must. It's, it seems like such an, you know, wispy kind of part of public health, but it just under, it underwrites and supports so much what we need to do. And, and we're right now, living in a time where, where our lack of focus on it is, is impeding our response to the pandemic. And, and also, you know, the, the pandemic of, of addiction.
Right. Any other questions, councilors? Any other points that anyone, sorry, Danielle, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that the mayor and you, Tom, just made this even more so important. If we can add a mental health component to what the director would do, or her department would do in the future, that's an excellent way of looking at how we're setting up a department for what we really want to help with public safety and harm reduction and mental health. That, that adds another layer that I didn't even think of, that we get mental health professionals in, because mental health is simply not being addressed well in our communities at all, and, or statewide. And I think if there's a way in which all the communities can build these kinds of, you would have a mental health expert under Bree, or under the director, sorry, Bree. Hopefully, that kind of thing is great. I think that, that's a great way to look at how this, the health department will expand in the future, and hopefully, the near future.
Yeah, add something?
Of course.
Chair, um, yeah, along that, you know, Dan, and I just, you know, I don't, I was gonna say, it's overstating, it's not. I mean, we have heard from our community very directly, you know, around, you know, behavioral and mental health supports and training for our departments. And, and I think that's all extremely relevant and needed, but if you don't change the culture and what's inside of a government or any kind of organization, it's not all for naught, but it's like something you do for 48 hours over the course of the year. I think for me, that goes right back to what, what the struggle is in East Hampton and a lot of municipalities is, who holds that training and who holds that work? So it does infuse the municipal culture. And, and for me, it's just boom, 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 it's public health. It's our health department holds that. And, and I, you know, I think we are all, you know, right now, we're shaking our heads and know, knowing that. But I think that's going to become more and more our reality, right? I mean, the, the support system, we need to shift. The schools are overburdened, police and fire are overburdened with this. And with all due respect, they do not have the expertise and the insight trained public health professionals have.
Great. Well, I didn't mean to go down a whole different road there, but I just, I saw something, and it aligned well with something that I've been thinking a lot about recently, so I just wanted to highlight that. This seems like a pretty good idea to me. I'm happy to discuss it further, but unless anyone else has any more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the mayor's recommendation for the adoption of a health director.
Second. I did, I was on mute.
Motion a second. Counselor Coniff?
I don't think you heard it, Tom.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Counselor Rest?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. All right, we'll see you, I assume, on Wednesday for the public hearing. Feel free to stick around, but I think we'll move on to the next topic.
I want to thank everybody. I'm so happy that you voted this in. Thank you.
Well, we still have to convince the council, but I think we'll, we'll do a good job.
Yep, yep.
Great. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the proposed language for the Ordnance Review Committee. I sent out a draft of this, but I'll just share, God, I have so many things open. I'll share my screen. This is just a, this is sort of the, the draft that I had sort of developed so far. And I wanted to know what people thought of, of this idea. So, yeah, Counselor Coniff?
Oh, you can finish your preamble.
Oh, it's not much of a preamble. You know, we talked about this, you know, what, two weeks ago? And based on that conversation and what was in the minutes, I, I tried to throw something together that would sort of just set the parameters for what we would expect of this committee, and how it would be comprised, and sort of what their scope and their process would be. And that's what this is. So I guess what I'd really be interested in is, did I miss anything? And then for, I guess, let's go over that first with just the councilors, did I miss anything? And then, once we're done with that, if any members of the public think that there's anything in here that's missing, or that's, should be done differently, we'll just take those, that feedback, and we'll deliberate on that, and then we'll have something to vote on. Does that process sound good? Okay, so Counselor Coniff, I saw you.
No, it looks great. It looks totally fine to me. The only thing that I'm a little concerned about is specifying the number of city councilors. It might be hard to get three. And so I was wondering if we could change that wording to no more than, or up to three, so that if we only got one or two, that would accommodate it, and the rest of the committee would be filled by members of the community. I don't want to, I don't want to hold up the committee, because we can't get a second or a third counselor to sign up for it. So if we change the wording to maximum of three city councilors, if we got one, we could go forward.
Counselor Rest?
So I heard from members of the ordinance committee, first, they thought that we should have, make this a subcommittee of the ordinance committee, and I disagreed with that. I think this should be a select committee. I think the charter wants that, and it should have a lot of citizens on it. But they expressed a desire that ordinance committee members be on. And I didn't know if this, this committee would want to recommend that two or three members, with two of them being ordinance committee members? Do we want to specify that? My comment to them was, it was Owen in Salem. My comment to them was, we're worried that people won't want to do it. So if you want to do it, I think there won't be a problem. But on the other hand, do we want to specify that? But I also go back to the notion that we discussed this as being a committee that advises, it doesn't make final decisions. And then if there's, there's items that we want to really have the council look at, we send them to, as you say, ordinance or public safety. I just want your thoughts on that, because I heard that, and I didn't know whether that was something we wanted to address, or just leave it to, yeah, ordinance committee members, I hope they would join this committee, but-
Well-
We're seeing them, I don't know.
Counselor Coniff, I do see your hand, but I just want to enter-
No, go.
To say that I am an ordinance committee member, and I'd be kind of a jerk if I didn't volunteer for the idea.
Well, there you go, we got one.
We've got at least one who's volunteering. Whether or not I sit on it will be at the pleasure of the president. But I, I think, you know, certainly, I think people, you know, well, you know, I just think, my personal preference would be to just keep it open, but certainly, if there are people from ordinance or public safety who want to sit on that committee, like, those are probably perspectives that would be really valuable. So, yeah, by all means. But I don't necessarily feel the need to, to state that explicitly.
I agree, because we need to have people committed.
Counselor Coniff?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I'm not in favor of preordaining the people that will be on this from the city council. That seems to be a very narrow view of this. And I, I think if we have people who are passionate around this topic and not on the ordinance committee, I would welcome them to apply and seek to be on the committee. And I, you know, if we just rubber stamp it to ordinance, which it may end up being the three people from ordinance, it just, it's too narrow a definition for this kind of thing that requires, it certainly requires knowledge of the ordinances, I don't dispute that, but it also requires a certain passion and interest in the topic. And there may be other people who are not on ordinance, who may have that passion and interest, and I want to open it up and keep it open to those individuals as well.
I just wanted to bring up what I heard.
Yep.
So Counselor Rest, would you be opposed to, if we change where it says two to three? If I change that to say with up to three, oh, here, three, I can write like in a-
That's fine. I saw Counselor Rothschild had her hand up, I just wanted to mention.
Oh, oh, yes, Counselor Rothschild, by the way.
Make your move.
Number, I had a question about the members of the community, and that doesn't mean people that necessarily live in East Hampton, does it?
Yeah.
My feeling is, is that reviewing ordinances with this kind of lens, there might be, I mean, that we'd be so lucky, let's just say, if there was somebody who had that kind of expertise or way of looking at things that was, wanted to sit, who for some reason had an interest in East Hampton, was in a neighboring community, or practiced, you know, worked in our community or whatnot. So I just, it doesn't seem like living here should be a requirement to be on this committee. it doesn't seem like living here should be a requirement to be on this committee.
Well, I can say if Billy Newman from the ACLU wanted to be on the committee, I wouldn't object.
Right, I mean, we should be.
That's the kind of person you're talking about, somebody with that kind of expertise.
Listen to me, it's like it takes a certain kind of experience and knowledge to, you know, to be able to, so if if we were so lucky to have somebody who was interested in sitting on this committee like that, I I would hope that we would be open to that.
I worded that kind of vaguely because while certainly, um, I mean, you know, these things tend to be most, like, these committees to be mostly East Hampton residents. There's no, there's no actual requirement that somebody be in East Hampton resident, resident. And I think there are a couple folks who are maybe business owners but don't live in East Hampton who sit on city committees. And I I don't necessarily have any, um, like, I I I wasn't, yeah, so, uh, I don't necessarily disagree with you.
Like if there was an ACLU member and their purview is the area, I'm part of that community, you know?
I I think that they could, yeah, definitely make the case that they have a stake in the community.
I don't think there's any charter-based residency requirement for this.
Nope. Uh, Counselor Coniff.
I've decided I'm not gonna be raising my hand anymore since it doesn't seem to matter. So my, my, my comment is that that is, um, that's a great idea. I like that idea. And and I also, um, like the idea that that we might get individuals who, to your point, um, ACLU folks and things like that. But I also want to be really clear. There will be a base of people, like, in other words, there won't be six to five to six people who are not part of East Hampton. And and I suppose it's kind of preaching to the choir since I will be along with my fellow counselors, be selecting the members. So I would obviously not load it up with people who don't live here. But I want to be really cautious that, yes, we should have people who have that that lens as well, but I really also want to make sure that we, we don't overload it with people who are not, um, living here and have the vested interest in what these ordinances say. Because there's, there's a difference between can we make a change? Does it make sense to make a change? And also, you know, i- is this something that this community is, is, um, an advocate for? So I think we need to have all the voices, I think. And I I just wanted to make that clear that we need to have everybody, I think, at the table.
Sure. Um, so just Counselor Coniff real quick, and then Counselor Rest, I did see your hand, but, uh, I just wanted to ask real quick. Do you, do you have, or Counselor Rothschild for that matter? Do either of you have an objection to the way I've used the phrase members of the community? I just wanted to state it like broadly, um, I, but I I could do different language if if you felt that there was some concerns about the way that that's worded.
I don't.
I just do, I I don't know if they could, just because it's not clear. Because when you see members of the community, I think people might feel like they have to live there, even though you're not saying that. So I don't, um, remaining members being, um, which may include, I don't know, let me think about it for a second.
Or members of the community and others who have experiential knowledge in this, uh, field or
What she said.
Well, I don't know that I said it that great, but I'm just saying.
I like the, what did you say, experiential? Is that a word?
Probably not.
He's gonna try and put it in, see what Microsoft does with it.
Yeah, he's changing it.
Or expertise.
With others with, um,
Experience in this, in this.
About with, with relevant
Expertise.
Expertise. Or
Experience.
Okay, never mind with, or others with relevant expertise. Does that?
Yeah, that's great. My
Yeah, Counselor Rest.
My comment, or question is to Peg, do you want the council to have approval over your recommendations? I know we did that with the new language in the charter review, and I just wondered if you wanted to go, that's an extra layer of approval. Currently, the president does pick committee members. But this is not, this is a select committee. I I just was curious what, how you felt about that. I'm happy to leave it as is.
Yeah, no, I absolutely would want, I think we should, whatever applications we get, we can bring it back to this committee and I'm happy to have it be something that the three of us and any other folks who want to provide input. What I, what I, what I am concerned about is that it turns into, um, it turns into, I don't want this person, I want this person, I need these people, I don't want that person. I don't want it to turn into something political or something, um, more more inflated than it needs to be. The the decision will remain with the three of us. And I just, I just don't want it to turn into, like, decision by, you know, large numbers of people.
We need to write that in if you want the council president with the approval of the Rules and Government Relations Committee. That needs to be in there because right now, as it stands, you just pick the committee after, you might get advice from people. But do we want to add that? It's another layer, which means that this, the timing on this gets late.
That is my
I don't know.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut in. That that is just my one thing on this is timeline, the idea of like adding a whole confirmation process to this worries me a tiny bit. I'd really like to get this off the ground by the end of December. And I generally trust you, President Coniff, to make, you know, uh, good decisions here.
Well, what you could do, Peg, maybe is list all the applicants and we all could make comment to you if you want. I don't know.
Well, let's see.
If you want rules backup, I have no problem with that either.
Okay, well, I guess we'll just see what we get to start with and let the chips fall where they may, I guess.
But we're not putting a confirmation process in.
No, I guess not. Let's not do that.
Okay.
Now, before I open it to the public, are there any other counselor, uh, comments or, uh, suggestions on, how this whole thing should go? Is there anything I missed? Is there anything you don't like? Because then I'm gonna open it up to the public and, uh, I just wanna, um, just, if there's any sort of more back and forth we should be doing before that, I just would like to know.
Just one quick question, Tom and Dan. Assuming that, you know, we we end up with a a product at the end of this meeting and we take it to city council, are we gonna take it this week?
I would do it Wednesday.
Yeah. Would it be, would it, do we need to put something in here or is it just, um, that I announce it and that we publicize that we're looking for people to apply to this? And then how are we going to publicize that we're looking for people to apply to this?
That's a good question.
The process for me is, this has to be approved by the council.
Right.
Because rules say that we can't do something for the whole council, the whole council has to approve this. Once they approve it, you know, there might be amendments, oh, we want a confirmation process or something like that. Once it's approved, and I would do it Wednesday, then it's, Peg, you announce right after the approval that you will accept applications from counselors and from the community. I think Tom's right, we gotta get this going.
And I can call up, um, sorry.
It'll happen Wednesday and you, it, you know, you bring it up at the, at the meeting, Tom.
And, you know, I'll do social media and I can call up the Gazette and ask them if they could run a story on. I mean, they ran a story when I announced this, so I could ask them to run a follow-up story and just sort of get this out there so that we get the visibility. You know, I know there's a lot of interested, um, individuals are on the call right now who will presumably, uh, spread the word as well. So I think there's, um, but yeah, we we should certainly ask the council in general to do what they can to, um, spread the word on this and make sure that we get a, a healthy pool of applicants.
But Dan, I just want to back up to something. We don't need to have the council approve this ad hoc committee.
We, we are establishing protocols for the committee. And we have a rule in place that no committee, this committee, can, I forget the language, something like, you can't hold the full council to something without their approval. Something like that. I forget what the, uh, language is. I really feel it should be a council approved.
I just, I just don't recall approving, like, the senior tax workoff committee as a, did we?
Yeah, we did.
Full committee, we did?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then I take it all back.
I just think it's safe also that everybody's on the same page with the full council. They know what we're doing and then they approve of what we're doing. And some of them might want to say, hey, like, for instance, we're seeing a committee of seven members. We can't just tell the council we're gonna do that. They have to approve it. And they may want to say nine members, which I would oppose. But on the other hand, they should have the right to make amendments to this. We're making it an advisory committee. Maybe they want to make it an actual committee that does the work. And I, you know, I'm just saying, there, there are areas where we might get amendments. And I think it's the right of the council to have that.
Okay.
To have that option. So I would bring it up, bring this language up and ask a motion, Tom, to approve this.
Yes, that's what I'll do. Anything else before I ask the public for feedback? Okay, so what I'm gonna do, just for the, just process, I'm going to ask anyone who, uh, wants to say something, to raise your hand on Zoom, uh, that way I'll see it. Louise, I've, I see that your hand's already up, so you'll go first, but just before you start talking, let me just say this. I'm gonna have everyone, um, just give your input. I'll listen, go to the next person. And then once I've heard everyone's input, we'll keep, we'll come back and keep deliberating. But I just, I'm not gonna make any changes to the document until I hear from everybody and then until I can circle back with the council. So I I don't want like a ton of back and forth right here. I'll just take everyone's feedback. If I, if we have any follow-up questions, we'll get back to you. But, you know, just to keep this orderly, uh, that's how I want to, uh, have it play out. So, uh, yeah, if anyone doesn't know how to do it, if you go into the participants, uh, tab on Zoom, you can raise your hand and, um, then, uh, that'll let me know that you, uh, want to speak because I can't see everybody, uh, on this, just the little side window. And, uh, yeah, so let's start with Louise.
Okay. I don't have input, actually. Um, it's more a question and I was, I think you've answered part of it, but coming at this from somebody who's not a counselor and has only seen any committees since, um, they've been on Zoom. My original question was gonna be, um, how do you select the community members? What's the application form? What's the process? Some of it's been discussed. Is it going to work the same way as, um, applying or stating interests to serve on one of the council's usual committees go where you send an application to the mayor? Is this a different process? Just asking for information, really.
So I can answer that question.
Okay, not, yeah.
The, uh, yeah, so, uh, committee membership on the, this will be a special committee of the city council. There'll be volunteers on it. But it'll be a special committee of the city council. And as such, uh, who is on it, uh, is, uh, that's, that's the decision of the city council president, uh, that being Counselor Coniff. So applications will go to Counselor Coniff and that'll be her decision, uh, who ends up serving on the committee. Uh, but that's the same for all of our, uh, like, when we did the senior tax right workoff, uh, it was the same thing. Does that answer your question, Louise?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay.
Don't worry, I'm not volunteering. I'm just clarifying.
Hey, Tom, um, so in the last meeting, um, that you spoke about this, you were talking about, you know, I see at the bottom of, um, what you've written there that if the, if the committee gets through, uh, everything fairly quickly before the year is up, that they may rule on, move on to reviewing, um, traffic. And you had, we had talked a little bit, or you had talked to that meeting about also potentially having the opportunity to review zoning for basis against, um, any marginalized communities that may want to establish, um, businesses or looking at it in terms of, um, of home zoning as well. So was that, it was, it was intentionally left, left out of there, thinking like, oh, there's no way that we'll get to it before, uh, that that the committee will get to it before the year's up? In, in being able to take on both the traffic rules and also zoning ordinances? I was just wondering if that was deliberate. And secondly, um, did you want to have wording in there to, um, let people that volunteer for this committee know that it's an, a year commitment? Yeah, that's it.
Great. Um, but I'll answer the zoning thing because I, that's a great question. We, uh, we just had a, a super interested in meeting with the, uh, the, uh, Fair and Affordable Housing Partnership that actually all three of us ended up attending. That's why we, um, postponed this meeting, was to attend that meeting. And, uh, sort of, long story short, I think that when it comes to addressing some of the issues in our zoning, it feels like there kind of is a, it's not totally up, like, off the ground yet, but this conversation is kind of, uh, happening within that body. And like, certainly we have a consultant who's working on, on, uh, proposing some, uh, you know, uh, suggestions on where our zoning might have barriers. There was a suggestion given at that meeting that, uh, should we be able to find the money for it? There, there might be, um, people who might be interested in just having us look at redoing our zoning in entirely, entirely, I mean, the, the, the point is like, I feel like the zoning is, is, I mean, it's such a huge issue. And I, I, I feel like when it comes to discussing that issue, there's like a really speci- like, specific skill set. I feel like that conversation is kind of happening and I don't want to get in their way. If that conversation doesn't happen in like a sort of satisfactory way, within a certain period of time, and I feel like we need to push on that issue, it might be that like, uh, a different group of people with a different set of experiences, might be sort of what are called on, and more, and sort of beyond that, I just feel that the ordinances, I think there's a totally reasonable chance that the orden, ordinances alone will take the whole time here. And if not, the traffic rules and orders will take a long time. So the idea that they're going to be able to get to our, what, three hundred page zoning ordinance? It just felt like, um, a, a little bit too much of a stretch. Now, if, if these, if they come back in four months and they've completed everything, I'm happy to revisit this. But my thought was to give them a, a task that could, um, reasonably be completed within a year. And I'm happy to hear, um, other opinions on that, but that, that just sort of was where I, I sat from sort of what I took in on the last conversation and, and what I took in on Thursday at the, uh, housing production plan meeting. You're right, though, that, um, I thought I had put something in here. Oh, yeah, it, it does say, uh, the committee will have one year to review the city ordinances and report back. So the, the, in terms of the idea that this is gonna be a one-year committee, it's there. Is there something else in terms of time commitment that you think is missing, though?
Apologies. Um, I just wanted to, um, make sure that, you know, if we're, if, like, if, for example, if I were to publicize to people that this committee was forming, um, that people had an idea of the fact that if they were to volunteer for this, then they would, would be expected to stick it out until it was done or for the year.
Okay, great. Uh, Counselor Rest, I see your hand. I'm just gonna go through everyone from
Okay, good, good, good.
Okay, anyone else from the public? Going once, going twice. Seeing nobody. Um, oh, Myra, I see you.
Um, just to clarify, hopefully you can hear me. Just to clarify, um, the commitment, um, for people that may be interested, you were saying that it's up to a year. But do you also have, uh, an idea about how often you'd be meeting? If it's a quarterly thing, a weekly thing, a monthly thing, so people would have a more, um, specified idea of what the commitment would, could be in a twenty.
The, the, the only thing I have, um, is just based on from when we did the charter review, we were meeting twice a month. I think that that's a pretty safe guess of, of the sort of time commitment we would be asking. I didn't put that in, but I'd be I didn't put that in, but I'd be happy to, uh, deliberate about, uh, explicitly stating, uh, the time commitment. Counselor Coniff, I see your hand. I just want to go through, if, if there, is there anyone else from the public before we go to that? Okay, seeing nobody. Uh, Counselor Riss, you had your hand, and then Counselor Coniff, I see your hand now.
I wanted to, I think Counselor Coniff, just going back from what I just heard, can state to the applicants that this is a one-year commitment, probably twice a month meeting. And are they able to make that kind of a commitment? Also, I wanted to make sure that we announce to everybody that there's going to be some homework here. It's not a committee where the chair brings in all the information and we, the members react to it. It ought to be a committee where everybody looks at ordinances, maybe a certain section per member, and they have some homework to look at things. I, I'm just saying it's a major commitment and it's, it's something that I think Counselor Coniff can present to any applicant. You know, when she phones them, do you really, you, you really know that we really need your commitment on this? And I think twice a month is, is at least that much as we met, right, Tom? Two or three hours of, of meetings, so.
Yeah.
We did, we missed some things. We didn't get everything done. And I hate to say it, the amount of ordinances we have are 10 times the amount of pages of the Charter. So just, there's a lot. So I think going through the ordinance, then zoning, and then traffic rules, if you get it, I mean, the scope of it is enormous. So it really is going to be up to the committee to decide, well, what should we do first?
Uh, Counselor Coniff.
Yeah, so like any committee in the city, there will be a chairperson that will be named by the committee. There will be a clerk that is named by the committee. And the committee will determine how frequently they will meet. I don't, I'm not in favor of us putting that into the rules. The committee will have the power to meet or not meet, um, as they need to. They will have a year to evaluate the ordinances, if they get two done, if they get 952 done in a year. It's entirely up to the purview of the committee, the rate at which they do this. Because I think until they start to dig in, it's unclear. And I don't want to, I don't want to pin them down to twice a month, every other week, um, you know, every Tuesday. That is going to be up to them. And I think they, as a committee, need to make that determination.
Okay.
Um, just sort of, uh, echoing something that, uh, Counselor, uh, Riss said. Uh, I don't, I, I agree with you, uh, Counselor Coniff, that we probably don't need to formally put this in. But, um, as you're getting applications and vetting them, uh, would you just be willing to, um, to sort of, uh, just make the time commitments, uh?
Yes. I, I think I can do this.
Okay, cool. Then I think.
What if we meet twice a month? Can you do that?
I, I think I can do this. I feel pretty confident that I'll be able to talk to these people and figure out how frequently they want to meet and to explain the time commitment. I think I'm good.
I have no doubt in your ability to do this. I'm, I'm just sort of saying, like, you know, it's since this seems to be, you know, a thing that people want to make sure that, that the applicants are aware of the time commitment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, cool. Um, is there anything else from anybody?
I like it. Do you, do you want to make a motion to send it to the council or?
Great, yeah. Um, I, yeah, since it's my, I, I will make a motion, uh, to recommend the, uh, establishment of an ordinance review committee to the full council.
Check.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Uh, all in favor. Counselor Coniff?
Yes.
Counselor Riss?
Yes.
Yes. Great. Um, is there anything else on our agenda that we want to get to tonight?
The bias training, I don't want to get into that yet. Is that a rule? Was that a rule request, the bias training?
Yes. Um, yeah. Okay, well, I mean, these are the two items I really wanted to, uh, see, uh, done, uh, tonight. And I know that, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't want to get into really any of the other stuff because, uh, none of the sponsors, I don't believe the sponsors of any of those things are here. And I really want to hear from them. So I'd say, uh, just in the, uh, spirit of resolving this, I'll reach out to, uh, the folks who sponsored these other three items, uh, and just, um, see where they are with them and if they're, um, if they're ready to present. And then I'll get back to, uh, the two of you with, uh, a sense of, you know, maybe what we should address at our next meeting. But I don't actually feel like at this time, none of this to me is super time sensitive. So let me figure out where, I know, uh, Counselor, uh, Zaret had submitted, uh, two of these. And the other one was Counselor Lynch. So I, I don't really know who's sort of, uh, running point on that right now, if anybody. Uh, but let, let me sort of figure out what, what the status of those things are. And, um, then, once I do that, I'll sort of reach out and we can schedule another meeting.
Okay. Oh, shoot, I just hit it. Oh, Tom, can you send this revised script to me and I'll put it in the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought we discussed, and I may be wrong, maybe we said yes to the no, that we would remove the pilot program for now without prejudice and bring it back later after the pandemic, because we were worried about adding that layer now. I, I don't remember what, where we ended up with that discussion.
I don't, I, I don't disagree with that sentiment. I don't remember if we did agree to do that or not. But, um, how do you feel about that, Counselor Coniff?
I know that, um, I know that there's somebody on the council who's very interested in this. So, um, I mean, I'm fine. If we take it off and we announce it and there are people who oppose it, they can certainly vote not to take it off the agenda. So, yeah, I just talk myself out of it. So, yeah.
How, how about this? If some, I'll, I'll, I won't, um, I, I propose we don't remove it without prejudice for now. But I will, like, if, if, if nobody comes forward and says that they really want to be, you know, working on this and, and specifically they want to be working on this right now, and at our, at our next rules meeting, um, I propose that we do that. I just, if there's somebody who like has something that they really specifically want to be doing right now, I don't want to, you know, jam them up there. But, uh, I don't, uh, I, I, if, if not, if, or even if that's something that they're interested in but don't have any short-term plans on.
Right.
I would propose that we remove it without prejudice.
I would agree. Yeah.
Okay.
I think you just announce that at the meeting, Tom. If anybody's really interested in pursuing this for Counselor Lynch, they come to the next meeting. My feeling on it is that, given the economic situation for all of our nonprofits, even Williston, I think it's not the best time to be pursuing this. But it is also something that I passionately agree with too. So I'm kind of conflicted, but I understand the, the economy now. We could bring it back when things get better, if they ever do. That's my view of it.
I'm fairly agnostic on that. My sole reason for, for not just removing it without prejudice is that if somebody who is interested in working on short term, I want to give them an opportunity. That's all.
Okay.
Um, and the other two things are Counselor Zaret's things. So I'll see if, I'll, I'll try, I'll try and make sure that he can make it to our next meeting, whenever that is. And.
You want to set one now, Tom? Or do you want to wait and see?
Well, no, let me, let me chat with him first because I don't want a meeting that he can't make, given the main things on the agenda are his proposals.
Fair enough. Yep. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor? Well, he said aye. Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thanks, everyone. Uh, have a great evening. For you, I'll see you in two days at the full council meeting.
Bye-bye.
Bye.